Good afternoon.
William.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, everybody. Chairperson Ben O'Schmidt is out of town today and he asked me to chair today's board meeting. I would first like to announce that we are going into executive session to discuss real estate matters at the end of this meeting. The board will reconvene in public session after the executive session. I would now like to read the following notice into the record of this public meeting. The meetings of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York are open to the public, and the board welcomes the interest of those who attend. The public has ample opportunity to communicate with the board. Public hearings on the board's policy calendar are scheduled one week prior to the board's regular meetings, and members of the public who wish to communicate with the board are invited to express their views at such public hearings. Furthermore, the board holds additional public hearings each year in all of the five boroughs at which members of the public may also speak. And in addition, written communication to the board are distributed to all trustees. The board must carry out the functions assigned to it by law and therefore will not tolerate conduct by members of the public that disrupts its meetings. In the event of disruptions, including noise, which interferes with the board discussion, after appropriate warning, I will ask the security staff to remove persons engaging in disruptive conduct. The university may seek disciplinary and/or criminal sanctions against persons who engage in conduct that violates the university's rules or state laws which prohibit interference with the work of public bodies. I would now like to request that everyone take a moment to mute your cellphone, or BlackBerry, or iPhone, or any other such device, if you wouldn't mind doing that. Thank you very much. As usual, CUNY TV is transmitting the public sessions of this afternoon's meeting of the Board of Trustees live on cable channel 75. This meeting is also being webcast live and can be accessed by going to www.cuny.edu. The public session of this board meeting will be available as a podcast within 24 hours and can also be accessed via the CUNY website. I would now, first of all, like to extend a very warm welcome to Bronx Community College President Carol Baruch Joseph, and thank you, Trustee Foster, Chair of the Bronx Community College Presidential Search Committee, and all the other members who served in this regard. Welcome in. I would also like to thank Trustee Kathleen Pacilli, who represented the trustees this past summer at the College of Staten Island Alumni Association's Early Years Alumni Event that recognized alumni from 1958 to 1976, and Honored Professor and Dean Emeritus, Dr. Semos Zadis. I very much regret to report the passing of former New York State Governor Hugh Carey on August the 7th. We will always remember him for his exemplary leadership of New York State and vigorous defense of New York City's fiscal solvency. He supported and signed into law the 1979 CUNY Financing and Governance Act, a multi-year initiative that largely transferred financing of CUNY senior colleges to the state and remains the principal law that CUNY is governed under. His support for major CUNY campus construction projects in all of the five boroughs was a milestone in public higher education investment, and he will be sorely missed. I also want to extend our deepest condolences to the family of Dr. Clyde Wingfield, who passed away on September the 15th. Dr. Wingfield served as the president of Baruch College from 1971 to 1975. Thank you very much for that. And now I will call on Trustee Valerie Beal to announce college faculty honors.
Thank you. Hunter College Provost and Vice President for Academic Affairs, Dr. Vida Karolyi Rabinsky, won the 2011 Canaro Award presented by the New York Lodge of the Sons of Italy in America. And Hunter College Sociology Professor Janet Popendick received the James Beard Foundation Leadership Award. Congratulations to both. New York City College of Technology Dentistry Professor Renata Boondy was named one of the top 25 Women in Dentistry by Dental Products Report Magazine, and City Tech Department of Vision Care Technology Chair Robert Russo received a 75th Anniversary Legacy Award from the New York Society of Obstetricians. Congratulations to both. QuantNet's 2011 Ranking of Financial Engineering Mathematical Finance MS Programs in the U.S. and Canada ranks Baruch College's Master in Financial Engineering Program at number five, leading MIT and Columbia. And Forbes Magazine ranked Baruch's College Zicklin School of Business at number 50 among the nation's best business schools, leading some nationally recognized programs at Boston College, the University of Illinois, Urbana, and Arizona State University. The Princeton Review Annual Guide, the Best 376 Colleges 2012 Edition, ranked Baruch College and Hunter College among the nation's best institutions for undergraduate education. The Princeton Review also ranked Brooklyn College and Queens College amongst its top stone-cold sober schools. I won't comment on that. Baruch College, Brooklyn College, City College, Hunter College, and Queen College, Queens College ranked among the top 100 colleges on U.S. News &amp; World Report's 2012 Top Regional Universities list. Both City College and the College of Staten Island were among the top 125 colleges under graduate engineering programs. Finally, Hunter College was also recognized in the least debt and most diverse categories. Pre-Law Magazine has ranked the CUNY School of Law amongst its top best value law schools in 2011. This concludes my report, and congratulations to all of our universities and colleges.
Thank you very much for that report. If we can just...
It was a great one.
Sorry, every one of those honors is extremely important. I will now call on Trustee Kathleen Pacilli to announce student and alumni honors.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Berry. Eight MFA students from CUNY were among the 22 students featured in Poets and Writers Magazine's September-October 2011 issue on portraits from an MFA nation. They are Alisa Goldstein, Ellen Adams, Katie Bellis, Sarah Autumn Feely, Maria Villafranca, and Taylor Bruce of Brooklyn College, Eric Silveira of City College, and Shanta Smith and Yves Chlorec of Queens College. Congratulations to each of you. Team New York, the city college's team of architecture and engineering students, designed and built a solar-powered rooftop module for cities like New York that is not only energy-neutral, but also provides energy for the building below. The students also helped to raise $1.4 million to do this. The Solar Roof Pod is finalist in the Department of Energy's prestigious Solar Deckathon. Congratulations. Graduate School and University Center doctoral student Soye Lee has won the 2010 Knoburg Award. She was also, she has also been invited to perform with the Chamber Music Society of Lincoln Center. Through their CMS II program and graduate school, doctoral student Joshua Mahan has received a 2011-2012 Creative Writing Fellowship in Poetry from the National Endowment for the Arts, as well as Poetry Magazine's 2011 Editor's Prize for the Best Feature Article. Congratulations to you both. Queensborough Community College student Vanessa Singroy was elected as a Fellow in the American Mathematics Association of Two-Year Colleges Project Access. Congratulations. Mr. Vice Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. If we can give a round of applause to all of the... Thank you, Trustee Pacilli. A list of the grants and gifts received by the university subsequent to the June 27th, 2011, meeting is available around the table and also in the trustees' calendar book. I will now call upon Chancellor Goldstein to present an update of recent activities. This is not an action item and doesn't require a vote. Chancellor?
Thank you, Vice Chair Berry. Let me start with our admissions profile for the board. CUNY received a record number of applications for fall 2011, including in excess of 20,000 students with high school averages exceeding 85 percent. Preliminary college estimates for fall 2011 show an increase in headcount enrollment of approximately 2.7 percent, resulting in a projection of over 296,000 students. This is a high-water mark in the 269,000 students is a high-water mark in the, in the university's history. Largest increase in enrollments continue to be at our community colleges. Since 1999, total headcount at CUNY has grown by 38 percent, from about 195,000 students to the 269 that I just represented, and that accounts for about 74,000 more students. Just to put this into perspective, this equals about increasing the university by three borough of Manhattan community colleges. On the state and city budget issues, following the special Board of Trustees meeting in late July, the university budget office distributed the 2012 initial budget allocations to the colleges. Although the allocations included across-the-board reductions to all colleges, these cuts were significantly mitigated by the additional revenue generated by the January and fall tuition increases. In addition, this revenue enabled the university to provide the colleges with funding for a compact investment plan, the largest component of which is targeted hiring of additional full-time faculty. On August 2nd, the New York State Division of the Budget issued its first quarterly financial update for FY 2012. The state's estimates as of the first quarter were consistent with the projections included in the state-enacted budget. The Division of Budget was still reporting a balance plan for the current year with a deficit of approximately $2.4 billion for FY 2013. On the city side, the current budget, the current year budget is also balanced, but the Office of Management and Budget is reporting an anticipated $4.6 billion deficit for next year. The mayor is expected to issue the next financial plan update in November. Moving on to the New York City Regional Economic Development Council, on July 29th, Governor Cuomo launched his new New York City Regional Economic Development Council and asked me if I would co-chair this effort along with Ken Chenault, Chairman and CEO of American Express. I'm pleased to say that President Marcia Keys was also appointed as a member of the council. Each of the 10 regional economic development councils is asked to map out a way to make investing in the state more attractive to businesses and to make it easier for companies to create jobs and to flourish here in the state. Specifically, the council's responsibilities are to develop a five-year strategic plan for long-term sustainable regional growth, coordinate economic development efforts within the region, leverage public and private resources, identify and eliminate obstacles to growth, and implement performance measures to ensure long-term success. We are on a very rapid train here, so much so that by November 14th, we must develop a five-year strategic plan that spells out a vision for economic development in the state of New York, the strategies to achieve it, priority projects, and a roadmap for implementation. The state will award $200 million in capital funds and tax credits to regions based on their strategic plans. $130 million from the Regional Economic Development Projects Capital Fund, which is already included in the governor's 2011-12 state budget, is available immediately, and $70 million in tax credits from the Enhanced Excelsior Jobs Program will be available beginning in 2010 tax year to be dispersed at about $2.3 billion over the next 10 years. The strategic plans for each region will be ranked by a Strategic Plan Review Committee, and the top four will each get $40 million, $25 million in capital grants, and $15 million in tax credits for their priority projects. The balance of the incentives will be divided up among the six remaining regions. State agencies have identified additional resources to be used. To access these funds, councils will use the consolidated funding application to apply for multiple state funding sources. So the total amount available in the year ahead will be approximately $1 billion. I would like to publicly thank Presidents Mitch Wallerstein, William Kelly, Tomas Morales, Antonio Perez, Russell Hotzler, Marcia Keys, for their help thus far in hosting meetings of this important council. I'm pleased to announce that Governor Cuomo approved the amendment to CUNY's long-term master plan authorizing the establishment of a new community college and the establishment of a new degree program in biology at Baruch College. At the moment, President Scott Evanbeck is probably the happiest of our presidents, so congratulations. I would like to congratulate and thank all the people who worked on the new community college initiative, including so many faculty who provided guidance and support, and including also our senior university dean, John Mogalescu, project director Tracy Mead, and deputy project director Stuart Cochran, among many others. I want to remind everybody that this is the first new college that CUNY has seen established in 45 years, so it's something that we're all very proud of and so many work so hard to see happen. The first national colloquium of community colleges took place last Friday, September 23rd, at the CUNY Graduate Center. There were participants from 26 states, which included over 50 community college presidents, 127 members of CUNY community college faculty, representatives from several research institutes, including the Community College Research Center, MDRC, the Institute for Database Change, and the Carnegie Foundation for the Advancement of Teaching. Walter Bumpus, President of the American Association of Community Colleges, gave the keynote address. Other distinguished presenters included Bill Bowen, former president of Princeton University, and President Emeritus of the Andrew W. Mellon Foundation, Susan Furman, President of Teachers College at Columbia University, Carl Schneider, President of the Association of American Colleges and Universities, and I would like to thank especially Vice Chancellor Eduardo Martí, who not only conceived the idea for this important conference, but really put it all together. So thank you, Eduardo. It was a great day. As we all know, we suffered through the hurricane tropical storm Irene that hit New York City on August 28th. CUNY and its colleges played an important role in preparing for the storm. The School of Professional Studies worked with the New York City Office of Emergency Management to deliver in-person and online training programs, and the following CUNY campuses served as evacuation shelters. New York City College of Technical College, City College, John Jay, Hunter, Baruch, Queens, Queensborough, York, Lehman, Bronx Community College, Medgar Evers. I'd like to thank all of them and for the college presidents and their staffs that gave comfort and shelter to so many people who saw the efforts of the university. Thanks again to senior university dean John Mogalescu, who led the effort with funding provided from the city, and Deputy Chief Operating Officer Ron Spalter, Deputy Chief Operating Officer Bert Sacks, and other central office personnel, among many others who participated. Mayor Michael Bloomberg's Applied Science Initiative, Campus Initiative, has been discussed by the board, by me, at our last meeting. I'd like to bring you up to date, as we know, the effort so far. We are partnering with New York University, the University of Toronto, Carnegie Mellon University, the University of Warwick, and IBM on a proposal. We are currently talking with the Indian Institute of Technology in Bombay as a possible additional partner. Stanford University has also expressed serious interest in partnering with community, with CUNY on a separate proposal, and all of these proposals are due at the end of October, and we expect the mayor to make his announcement on the winning proposals by the end of this year. All of you remember that in June, the Board of Trustees passed a historic resolution to ease transfer at the City University of New York, among many other academic objectives in that proposal known as the Pathways Initiative. The resolution included policies designed to facilitate CUNY students transferring general education major and elective credits. Since the passage of the resolution, much progress has been made in putting into effect the new transfer policies. During the summer, I appointed both a steering committee and a working committee, which will recommend to me the structure of CUNY's Common Core of General Education courses. I want to thank the huge number of faculty that wanted to participate in the steering committee, but we couldn't entertain all those who wanted to participate. Thus far, the committees consist of 47 faculty, three campus-based administrators, and four undergraduate students, all led by CUNY Law School Dean Michelle Anderson. I'd like to thank the college presidents and many other constituencies who came forward with a splendid list of nominees for these committees, which have already had several meetings and have been making significant progress towards the recommended Common Core. I remind the university community that there is extensive information about the work of these pathways on our website. The completed draft recommendations will be distributed to the entire CUNY community by November 1st, with comments due back on November 15th, and final recommendations due by December 1st. We are now in the process of assembling committees to work on each of the nine largest transfer majors. These committees again consist primarily of faculty, which will recommend the first three to six courses that any student at CUNY will take to begin one of these majors. Graduate Center President Bill Kelly will be leading this portion of the Pathways project. Again, I am grateful to the many dozens of faculty that have expressed interest in important, in this important initiative. As I do every summer, I met with all the CUNY college presidents and deans as part of the performance management process. I continue to be emboldened by the overall progress made by all of our colleges. My roadshow to all of the community campus, all of the CUNY campuses will conclude over the next few weeks. I will have visited all the campuses except for the School of Professional Studies and the new community college. CUNY has long prided itself on its commitment to diversity. I am deeply grateful to Vice Chancellor Ginger Waters for her exceptional work, for the exceptional work that she does in this regard, in connection with the university's Office of Recruitment and Diversity, to work with the colleges as they implement local and university-wide programs to help support faculty and staff diversity, consistent with the principles of access and quality. In that spirit... Thank you, Ginger, for seeing people support this effort. In that spirit, I ask Vice Chancellor Waters and university dean Jennifer Rubain to work with the consulting firm Cambridge Hill Partners and a diversity study committee to examine the effectiveness of our faculty recruitment and diversity activities, with an eye towards building upon current initiatives and further strengthening the climate of inclusion. To both review the results and to develop an action plan, we will establish a university ad hoc committee on strengthening diversity at CUNY, which will include representation from both the Board Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration, and the Council of Presidents Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration, in addition to members of the Chancellery, faculty, and students. The ad hoc committee will be staffed by Vice Chancellor Waters, and her office will assist with preparing an action plan. I will be in touch with all of you as we follow up on this important initiative. Now, we have a lot of people in the audience that have a very legitimate concern, and I'd like to talk about that for just a minute, and this has to do with adjunct health insurance. We have been working for some time now on providing health insurance for adjuncts who teach continuously over several semesters. We are in touch with state officials to explore, to obtain funding through the collective bargaining process. I will be up in Albany tomorrow to be discussing these issues with members of the executive group at the university. And I will be incorporating into the university's budget request for the first time, funding to support health benefits for these adjuncts, and at the same time, addressing structural and grievance issues relating to the entity that administers the health insurance plan known as the CUNY Welfare Fund. This week, as I said, I hope to bring back more information as we move to implement something that has not been done to any of our satisfactions, and we will continue to work on this important issue. The New York, the New York, the New York simulation, the New York...
Fight, fight! Health care is a right! 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 Fight, fight! You want diversity, stop raising tuition! You want teachers to be able to stay here, give them healthcare! This is Sam Moore!
A nose mission?
Fight, fight! Health care is a right! 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 Fight, fight!
Lord acts in mysterious ways.
Lord acts in mysterious ways. Let me, let me, let me share with you some very recent news, which is quite extraordinary. It's hot off the press. I learnt about this about an hour and a half ago. I'm pleased to announce that CUNY today received a major grant of nineteen point eight million dollars from the U.S. Department of Labor.[628.54][628.54](applause) For an initiative called Career Path, this was one of about thirty-five grants nationally made from a five-hundred-million-dollar pool of funding that was initiated by President Obama. CUNY's program will provide credit-bearing training, job placement, and transition of college support to working adults in healthcare manufacturing, hospitality, education, and business sectors. The university applied in a consortium way, which is what we've been trying to do over and over at this university, working to scale up our efforts by working collaboratively across campuses. So I'm very proud of the faculty that worked on this, the college presidents that worked on this, especially the Office of Academic Affairs, led by Suri Deitch, University Associate Dean for Continuing Education, who basically put together the successful plan, and our own Dean John Mo Galescu, who worked very hard on this. This idea was first presented to me by Eduardo Marti and the individuals who worked on this, particularly Shane Spalding, the Director of Workforce Development in the Central Office, Stuart Schulman, and faculty, especially from Kingsborough Community College, were very, very successful. For CUNY to continue to be noted nationally for its very innovative efforts in community colleges is really something all of us should take great, proud, be very proud of. I continue to say it is an asset class in higher education that has been neglected for a long time. It's a uniquely American kind of asset class in higher education, really almost unknown in the United States before World War II. And it is the fastest-growing asset class in higher education. And for this institution, CUNY, to be recognized with a grant of nearly twenty million dollars is really an extraordinary accomplishment that all of us should be deeply proud of. Let me finish with just a few more things, and I apologize for this lengthy report, but everything that I'm having to say here, I think, is important for the board to hear. The New York, the New York Simulation Center opened in early September at the New York University Medical Center, a partnership with NYU and CUNY. These are all of the things that are happening this year and next year, and we call this affectionately "CUNY Rising." The new Lois V. and Samuel J. Silberman Building in East Harlem opens tomorrow. And I'm sorry, Jennifer, that I won't be there because I really have to be in Albany, and I lament that I can't be there to see this extraordinary new building opening in East Harlem that's going to house the new CUNY School of Public Health and our very highly esteemed School of Social Work. So kudos to the members of both of those faculties and all of the people that work so hard. The Library and Archives of the Center for the Puerto Rican, for Puerto Rican Studies, the Brookdale Center for Healthy Aging and Longevity, all would be included here. John J.'s new building will open later this fall, and Jeremy, we look forward to that ribbon-cutting ceremony. Other openings are planned for next year, including CUNY's Law School, a new building in Long Island City, Bronx Community College's new academic complex, Fitterman Hall is rising at Borough of Manhattan Community College, and there will be others to follow. Lehman's College Science Building, the CUNY Advanced Science Research Center on the City College Campus, the new community college. Twenty percent of all construction, twenty percent in New York City today is at the City University of New York. One out of five projects here at the City University of New York. And I keep on complimenting Iris Weinshaw. She's better than a statin in clearing the clogging in, in the pathways, and she just makes these, these projects move forward. They are statins, right?[933.11][933.11](applause) I had the pleasure of this Saturday night being with my friend Jim Simons, who many of you know as one of the leading mathematicians in the world and the founder of Renaissance Technologies, one of the most extraordinary head funds in recent history, announcing a new partnership with CUNY and Math for America, which I have a particular interest in. And I'm pleased to announce that Math for America has left its home at NYU, left its home at Columbia University, and left its home at Bard College, and has found a new home at CCNY. And there was a wonderful gala at Cipriani's on Wall Street that I gave a talk along with Jim Simons announcing this important result, and it's just further affirmation that so many people and important institutions today want to partner with CUNY, and something I think that all of us should be very proud. Math for America is a very important effort going on. And Lisa, I want to thank you for taking a leadership role with your faculty and others at CCNY. That's the first node that we will use for Math for America at CCNY, and then it will expand throughout CUNY as well. And thank Joan Luca Rielo, Luca Rielo, who is, works in academic affairs, for leading this important effort on behalf of the university. And lastly, some college honors. Kingsborough Community College has been ranked first among community colleges for its comprehensive implementation of technology, supporting the institution's operations, as well as serving students, faculty, and staff by the Center for Digital Government, Center for Digital Education, and congratulations to Regina Perucci. Congratulations to President Ricardo Fernandez for being the first-ever recipient of the New York Jets Hispanic Leadership Award. Does that mean tickets to games? I don't know.[1073.83][1073.83](applause) Remember, we have a code of ethics that we work here at the university with. But nonetheless, congratulations, Ricardo. That's wonderful. Congratulations to Ken Olden, the founding dean of the CUNY School of Public Health at Hunter College, and renowned environmental health scientist and environmental justice advocate for receiving the two thousand and eleven Richard and Barbara Hansen Leadership Award and distinguished lectureship from the University of Iowa College of Health. The award is given annually by the University of Iowa College of Public Health to honor individuals who have made sustained contributions in the field of public health. That is a singular important honor, Ken, and congratulations. Congratulations to Vice Chancellor Frank Sanchez, who received the L. Award from El Diario La Preza on October 20th. This recognition is given annually to some of the most influential Latinos in the community. And finally, I would just like to note the passing of a very good friend of mine and a wonderful, wonderful former president of Stony Brook and a first-class physicist, John H. Marburger III, who died as a young man. He will sorely be missed. For those of you who remember John, he's the past director of the Woodhaven National Laboratory, the director of the White House Office of Science and Technology. And the presidents will remember, he led a very important discussion at one of our retreats a few years ago. Mr. Vice Chancellor, that, Vice Chair, that's a, that's my report. It's enough, don't you think?
Anything else?
That's it.
No, thank, thank you very much, really. Great, great work, and, and really, we should always take time to savor good news. So thank you very much for that report. Really appreciate it. I have a few other items here that will require a vote, and they'll begin here. I'll first present an item number one, which is the Chancellor's University Report for September 26, 2011, including addenda and errata documents. You will find copies of these reports on the table. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much. I also would like to present item number two, which is the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting of June 27, 2011, and also the special board meeting of August the 3rd, 2011. The draft minutes are in your meeting books. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much. It carries. I would like to now begin the committee reports. First, let me present item number three, which is a notice of amendments to the bylaws of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York. This notice is for informational purposes, and the proposed amendments to the bylaws will be considered at the Board of Trustees' meetings on November 28th. Next, I would like to present item number four, which is a Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research, and I'll call on Committee Vice Chair Hugo Morados to present these items. Hugo?
Thank you. The Chair, on its September 7, 2011 meeting, the committee approved four policy matters. Calendar number 4A, application to register the BS in Mathematical Education at New York City College of Technology. This program, which provides initial certification in secondary mathematical education, is innovative in design and capitalizes on the college's strength in technology and science. Establishing this program, the college expects to increase the number of high school mathematics teachers from, on the represented groups. Calendar number 4B, application to register the dual joint AAS and BSED in technology career and technical education at Queensboro Community College and New York City College of Technology. This joint program fulfills the academic requirements of both initial and permanent certification as a career and technical education teacher in New York State. It capitalizes on both, the strengths of the technology curriculum at Queensboro and the more than ten years of experience that New York City Tech has in preparing teachers in this field. Calendar number 4C, application to register the dual joint AS and BS in accounting for forensic accounting economics at Borough of Manhattan Community College and John J. College. This program responds to an increased demand in entry-level employment for individuals with an interest in detecting fraud in financial reporting. The partnership between these two institutions builds on the strengths of an established accounting curriculum of VMCC and John J.'s expertise in the law through John J.'s forensic financial analysis track in their economic major. Calendar 4D, application to register the AS in Police Science at Hostess Community College. This academic program prepares students for a career in law enforcement or protective services and fulfills the educational requirement for entry into New York City Police Academy. The program has been articulated with the Police Science Bachelor Degree Program at John J. Items 4 through 4D approved by the committee, and I recommend the approval by the board.
Thank you very much for moving that item. Is there a second? It has been duly second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much for your report.
Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Like to now call on the, number five will be the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration, and I'll call on the committee chair, Trustee Valerie Beal, to present these items. Trustee Beal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair. I am pleased to present, for the board's consideration, the items that the Committee of Faculty, Staff, and Administration reviewed at its meeting on September 7, 2011. Items 5A names the newly restored entryway to Shepherd Hall at the City College of New York, the Marty and Michelle Cohen Way. Mr. Cohen, an alumnus and longtime supporter of the college, is chairman of CCNY's 21st Century Foundation Board and has donated more than, donated more than one million dollars to the college. In recognition of his generosity, the college requests that the historical entryway to Shepherd Hall be named in his honor. Mr. Chair, I present item 5A for the board's consideration.
Thank you very much. Is there a second to this?
Second.
All in, any discussion first? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much.
Item 5B names a professorship in honor of Marilyn Jacobs-Gatell, a longtime member of the doctoral faculty at the Graduate Center, who passed away in 2010. Professor Gatell was a respected social activist who wrote extensively on urban politics and education. To date, approximately two point five million dollars has been pledged to the Graduate Center Foundation by her friends, family, colleagues, and the Sage Corporation to establish a fellowship in her name. Mr. Chair, I present item 5B for the board's approval.
Thank you very much. Can we have a second to this? Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? It passes. Trustee Beal?
Item 5C names the Vito Marcantonio Conference Room at Hostess Community College. He was a protege of Fiorello LaGuardia, served seven terms as congressman to East Harlem. Gerald Meyer, professor emeritus at Hostess, has pledged twenty-five thousand dollars to the college foundation in honor of Congress Marcantonio, and in recognition of that gift, the college has requested that Congress, Conference Room B-115 be named for the congressman. Mr. Chair, I present item 5C for the board's approval.
Thank you very much. Trustee Beal? Is there a second to that?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? It passes. Thank you very much.
Item 5D amends the governance plan at Lehman College to change the designation of the student members of the college senate from Student Conference to Student Legislative Assembly, in response to a referendum approved by the Lehman Student Body establishing a Student Government Association. Mr. Chair, I present item 5D for the board's approval.
Thank you very much. It's been moved, 5D. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much. Trustee Beal?
Items 5E, F, and G are a series of namings at college, at Queens College, which I will present as a group. They are the Ellen Gruber Elementary and Early Childhood Education Scholarship Award, and the Ellen Saul Gruber Classes 64 Elementary and Early Childhood Education Seminar Room, the Forbes I. Hill Scholarship Endowment Fund, and the Forbes I. Hill Lecture Hall, and the Ruth Gordon Normal, Norman Memorial Scholarship Endowment. These namings carry gifts totaling nearly three hundred thousand, three hundred fifty thousand dollars. The Board Committee for Faculty, Staff, and Administration has reviewed them and recommends their approval. Mr. Chair, I present items 5E through 5G for the board's consideration.
E, F, and G have been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much. Trustee Beal?
Item 5H amends the university's campus and workplace violence prevention policy to include specific references regarding the reporting of incidents of suspected workplace violence and for the filing of complaints against the university for violations of the Workplace Violence Prevention Law and CUNY's own violence prevention policy and programs. These amendments have been made in response to a recommendation by the New York State Department of Labor Bureau of published employee safety and health. Mr. Chair, I present item 5H for the board's approval.
5H has been presented. Is there a second? Is there a second? All in favor? Any discussion, first of all? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much. It carries. Trustee Beal?
Item 5I names the Surfin' Ara Maltese Academic Hall at LaGuardia Community College. Surfin' Ara Maltese is a former New York State senator who represented the 15th District located in Southern and Central Queens for 20 years. Senator Maltese has been an exceptional supporter of higher education and a steadfast sponsor of state appropriations for LaGuardia Community College, securing over $50 million in state capital funding for the school. His appropriations also funded the creation of a comprehensive lavatory for the college's program for deaf adults. The senator is the recipient of LaGuardia's President's Medal, which is awarded annually to distinguished advocates of higher education. Mr. Chair, I present item 5I for the board's approval.
5I has been moved. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much. It carries. Trustee Beal?
And finally, we have an additional resolution, item 5J, that came to our attention after our meeting, which I will now read. Resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approve the naming of the Hyman Brown TV and Radio Studios at CUNY TV. Hyman Brown, who died in 2010, was a graduate of Brooklyn College. He was a talented and successful producer, director, writer, and actor during the golden age of radio. During his 65-year career, he produced more than 30,000 radio shows, including such series as Inner Sanctum Mysteries, CBS Radio Mystery Theater, Flash Gordon, Dick Tracy, The Thin Man, Grand Central Station, and the Bulldog Drummond. He acted, he directed actors like Orson Welles, Helen Hayes, Boris Karloff, Peter Laurie, Frank Sinatra, and Marion Settles. He received a Peabody Award and the American Broadcaster Pioneer Award and was inducted into the Radio Hall of Fame. He was a member of the CUNY TV Advisory Board for nearly a decade. Mr. Brown was the founder of Radio Drama Network Inc., which has pledged a gift of $4 million, of which $2 million will be paid immediately and the remaining $2 million over two years, to the CUNY TV Foundation, which will hold the Hyman Brown Archives, digitize them, and produce shows using materials in the archives. I would like to express our deepest appreciation to the family of Hyman Brown, who is represented here today by his granddaughter, Ms. Melinda Brown, who is in the audience today. Mr. Chair, I am pleased to present item 5J for the board's approval.
Okay. 5J has been presented. Is there a second?
I think Judah Gribbich should second because he used to watch and listen to all these radio shows.
So did I.
And I'm the Thin Man.
I just wanted to correct the record. It was the Bulldog Drummond.
Not your line.
Not from France.
I think only the shadow knows, really. The shadow does. You're correct. So it's been duly seconded.
Who did Captain Video? That's what I want.
Is there any other discussion?
It's been moved to the second.
Just for the record, I spoke with Melody Brown during the break. She is out here in the audience. If she wouldn't mind just standing... Very delightful conversation with her, and her values are very intact in terms of carrying on the legacy that has got her to where she is now, and she continues with the legacy of her grandfather. Thank you very much for supporting us, for your generosity, and we hope to continue to execute the vision, as you have said. Any other discussion? Yeah, no. Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It joyfully passes. Trustee Beal?
Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Trustee Beal. I'd like to now move to item number six, which is the Committee on Facilities and Management. I will now call on Trustee Frida Foster to present these items.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. The Board of Trustees Committee on Facilities Planning and Management considered eight items at its meeting on September 7, 2011. These action items are listed in the board meeting as calendar items 6A through C. Item 1, Brooklyn College Master Plan Amendment, to authorize the amendment of the college's master plan to accommodate the anticipated needs of the college. Since the current master plan was adopted in 1995, the college's needs have become strongly impacted by the burgeoning enrollment and revolution in the technologies necessary for instruction, research, and faculty and student support. The proposed master plan amendment includes strategies developed to accommodate these changes, providing for renovations and new construction projects as required to make sure the college has the facilities it will need to best serve its students and faculty. Item 2, Brooklyn College TV Studio, to authorize the execution of a construction and equipment installation contract on behalf of Brooklyn College for reconstruction of the TV studio production facility in Whitehead Hall. The technologies required for TV production have undergone revolutionary changes in the past few years, requiring that the college replace all of its current studio equipment with new state-of-the-art digital equipment. The college must also reconstruct the studio facility infrastructure to accommodate the new technologies and to bring them into compliance with current codes. Item 3, College of Staten Island Residence Hall, to authorize a ground lease and associated financial instruments for construction and management of a student housing facility of approximately 458 beds on the College of Staten Island campus. The chancellor and the CSI president have determined that providing a residence facility on campus would promote and enhance the educational mission of the college and the university. The facility will be located on a site on the north campus to be leased from DASNY to the college, to the college's Auxiliary Services Corporation, Inc., or a subsidiary thereof. The operation and management of the facility will be arranged by separate development and management agreements between the CSI entity and the American campus communities. I hereby request your approval of these calendar items.
Good. Thank you very much. Items 6A to C have been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much. Is there anything else to report?
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Trustee Foster. I want to just present item number seven, which is a non-action item, and that is that calendar item number seven is being read for informational purposes only. It serves as notice of action taken by the Board of Trustees Executive Committee on July 21, 2011, of one item recommended by the chancellor that was consequently adopted by the board at a special meeting on August 3, 2011. The action taken is listed as the City University of New York Revised Tuition Schedule effective Fall 2011 on pages 13 through 15 of your calendars. There being no further business, I would ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting to go into executive session. We will be reconvening in public session afterwards. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? We will now go into executive session.[1683.26]